Technical difficulties. Evening, Larry. Evening, everybody. We'll get started. I will call this meeting on the Washere County Board of Adjustments order. This meeting will begin with a public hearing. Anyone other than the applicant or their representative wishing to speak must register and submit. The registration slipped to the zoning administrator at this time. Following the hearing, we will conduct our monthly business meeting, at which time we will vote on the applications. You may stay and hear how the applications are decided, or you may leave following the hearing. The applicant and town board will be sent the copy of tonight's decisions. Any other person wishing to receive a copy of the decision can sign the sheet on the table at the front of the room. Those of you wishing immediate knowledge of outcome of these proceedings may call the county zoning office tomorrow morning. The procedure we will follow for hearing each application is, after each application is read, the applicant, their agent, or representative will be asked to present their application, followed by any questions or comments from the board. Then all correspondence will be read. Then others in favor will have a chance to speak. Anyone objecting will then have a chance to speak. I will then ask for a summary of the board's field observations and any staff comments. Finally, the applicant will be allowed a chance for a short rebuttal if they wish. Anyone wishing to speak should use the microphone, state their name, and direct your comments to the board. Because of the number of applications tonight, I'm asking that all testimony be kept brief and to the point. The applicant will have five minutes to present the information on their application, other than questions from the committee. Anyone else wishing to speak should limit their testimony to three minutes. And any rebuttal by the applicant should also be limited to three minutes. If you are testifying as a nearby landowner, please tell us where your property is located relative to the subject property. Tonight's hearing will be recorded, and a recording will become part of the record. Comments that are based on hearsay or secondhand information, as well as slanderous or prejudicial remarks, will be ruled out of order. The committee has looked at all the properties, and the record will reflect these observations. Any person affected by an administrative decision of its board has thirty days from the filing of tonight's decision to file an appeal. Such appeals are heard by the Washere County Circuit Court. Information on appeals is available from the clerk of court's office and qualified legal counsel. The county assumes no liability, makes no warranty as to legality of any construction commenced prior to expiration of this thirty-day period. I'll now introduce the board. Back row in the back, Larry Timm, George Peterman, John Benz, John Schurk, and I'm Kevin Fitzgerald. Todd Waller, our zoning administrator. Our first variance tonight, Gary Miller, Walworth, Wisconsin, has made application for a variance in accordance with Sections 58-542, Sub C, Sub 2 of the Washere County Zoning Code, to construct a ten-foot-by-ten-foot mudroom with walkout basement for a personal shop coming to within twelve feet of the side lot line. Fifteen feet required in an RS residential, single-family zone within the shoreline area. Location: A parcel of land known as Spring Lake's Estate, Subdivision Lot 22, Section 26, T18N, R11E, Town of Marion, Spring Lake, Address N 819 Spring Lake Estate Drive. Will the applicant or their spokesperson please come forward? State your name, please, for the record. Into the microphone, please, Gary.
Good evening. My name's Gary Miller. I come tonight to ask for a variance on the side setback of our property to put on this ten-foot-by-ten-foot mudroom. It will encroach three feet, so it'll be twelve feet from the lot line instead of the required fifteen. I need to do this because of the narrow nature of the lots. There are only sixty-three feet there. And it's the only access I have to the house. I don't have any other place I can put this mudroom. Right now, we are coming from directly outside into the kitchen, right in front of the stove. And so we're trying to get someplace where we can get our snowy, snow, muddy, wet clothes and get those hung up instead of bringing them into the house. This ten-by-ten foot would be structured as such to heights the same as the existing house. It will have the same siding, which is board and batten. Again, the basement will be a full basement under there, not be connected to the house, but no access from the inside the house. It will only have outside access. Would be basically a storage area for lawnmower, snow blower, and, you know, someplace I can work inside and create some sawdust. Other than that, I don't have anything else. You guys have any questions?
Okay, yeah, I got a bunch of questions, and maybe the committee will have some questions for you, too. Has there been a recent survey?
I did have a surveyor come out and survey that side of the property, and he has flagged it. So they are visible and...
So we're sure of where that lot line is on that side?
Yes, yes.
And have you talked to the neighbor?
I did talk to the neighbor. He did sign a letter saying he had no objection to it. I did present that letter and gave it to the board for copies. You've got copies of, I'm sure, everything, my drawings, everything else that I plan on doing.
Is this going to be on a poured concrete foundation?
Poured, poured foundation, just like the house, correct.
Yeah. Same grade as what you have now? Couple steps coming in, or how are you going to do that?
Yeah, actually, the, it'd probably be one step up into the house or into the porch. One of the reasons I'm doing this is that area, I have a retaining wall, and that retaining wall has failed. And my entrance to the house has sunk as well as part of my driveway. So once I get everything back up to gray, it'd be one step up into the house and...
What's the finish?
We'll have, we'll have a hill. We're not, we're going to get rid of... The basement will be the retaining wall, basically, and to the side of it, towards my neighbor, will be a larger area of a sloped hill that's already there. The neighbor's side is probably...
And that'll be natural grass?
Be natural grass, correct.
Finish height on the addition?
I knew you were going to ask that, and I didn't look it up on my drawings here. I believe it's twelve or thirteen feet. I'd have, it's twelve feet from the peak of the house down to the ground.
When you do this, are you going to put a silk barrier up to control the erosion?
Yes, because of the lake is within the three hundred feet that's required.
Are you thinking of any other improvements at this time?
Other than maintenance of a septic system that I've got to have taken care of?
Yeah. There's no non-conforming structures? Other options? Do you have any?
I really don't. Other than a very small entrance that would not be accommodating to being put closets and things like that into it.
The hardship?
Is the narrow lot line. We don't have the room there with only sixty-three feet to do anything of any size at all.
You know what permits you'll need?
I'll need a building permit. I haven't decided on a contractor yet. Waiting for this process. The contractors I've talked to said, go ahead and get the variance taken care of before I talk to them, so...
When would you like to start the project?
Well, considering the late time of this year, it's probably going to be in the spring. I doubt I can get anybody... They're busy. They can't do projects. Most of them have said it'd be next year anyway, so...
I don't have any further questions. Committee?
Gary, what side of the addition is the door going to be on? East side?
The addition will be, the door will face the driveway, which would face the main road.
East, okay.
Right. The door on the house is faced east now.
Right.
Right. What information I've gotten from, you know, retaining wall type things, there is an option of doing a grass hill. Yeah, there is that option to do that, depending on the steepness. It's an eight-foot drop. So, and if that were obviously something down the road, that's not going to be able to maintain, then I'd take steps at that time.
You're not right on top of the water there with this addition. How far back are you?
Oh, we're, we're close to two hundred feet, I bet.
Yeah, okay.
There would be no issue if they had to restabilize with retaining walls. That could be done.
There might be a small one right by, because the driveway and the slope, I might have to have a, at least on the side of the driveway, I might have to have a couple feet just to hold that driveway in. Because that slope is longer than what the build, the addition would be. I think it's a twenty-foot slope right now, and we're only going ten feet. But that retaining wall would, you know, go pretty much down the side of the building.
Larry or George, anything? Okay, correspondence?
Okay.
You can have a seat.
Thank you, thanks.
Yep, and you'll have a chance at a rebuttal if you need it.
All right, thank you.
I do have a letter addressed to the Washere County Zoning Board. States, Dear zoning board, I understand that my neighbors, Gary and Kathleen Miller, at the address of N 819 Spring Lakes Estates Drive in the Town of Marion, are planning to add onto their home an entrance porch to their home next to our property. I realize that the proposed ten-by-ten addition would encroach upon the setback of fifteen feet to my property line by three feet, leaving a twelve-foot setback to the property line. I have no objections to this variance that would be required. Sincerely, Tim Lindell. Address 821 North Spring Lakes Estates.
You think it, Todd? Anyone in favor to speak?
I have nobody registered to speak in favor, against, or informational.
Staff comments?
Okay, for the benefit of everyone here and also for the board, I'm just going to summarize staff's report. The applicants, Gary and Kathleen Miller, are requesting a variance to construct a ten-by-ten mudroom with walkout basement for personal storage coming to within twelve foot of the side lot line when fifteen foot is normally required in an RS 20 residential, single-family zone within the shoreline area of the Town of Marion. As depicted upon the attached plans, the applicants seek to construct a ten-by-ten addition onto the north side of the home. It's anticipated that this additional space would be a new entryway with closets and then would also function as additional storage area down below for lawn equipment. Board visited the property at the recent onsite on Monday, October 18th, and was generally supportive of the variance. And the board really had no other comments, other than they did witness firsthand the failing retaining wall and the sinking entryway. It was also the belief from the board in generality that the addition was well thought out and should not have a negative impact upon the neighbors to the north. With regard to hardships and justification, the applicant does cite the narrowness of the lot, also cites the fact that it would not be of any harm to the public interest, and also did cite the existing failing conditions, as well as the need for additional space. Staff has reviewed this request and believes the request is in keeping with similar requests approved by the board in recent day. Staff also believes the existing home in the addition will result in a modestly sized home that will still maintain the character of the area while not establishing a precedent. While the board will be making a recommendation on this request later in the evening, staff is recommending approval of the variance to construct a ten-by-ten mudroom with walkout basement for personal storage coming to within twelve foot of the side lot line, fifteen foot normally required in an RS 20 residential, single-family zone within the shoreline area of the Town of Marion, subject to the conditions listed in your report.
Thank you. Any questions, Todd? Gary, do you need a rebuttal? Thank you. All right, we'll go to the, our next one. Jerome and Deborah Fliss, St. Francis, Wisconsin, have made application for variance after the fact in accordance with Sections 58-451, Sub C, Sub 4 of the Washere County Zoning Code to construct a four-foot-by-twenty-eight-foot, one-story addition onto a twenty-eight-foot-by-thirty-two-foot, non-conforming, single-family dwelling, non-conforming due to ordinary high-water mark setbacks coming to within forty-six feet of the ordinary high-water mark of Twin Lake. Average sixty-foot required setback in the AG general agricultural zone within the shoreline area in the town of Springwater. Location: Approximately .71 acre parcel of land known as Twin Lake Heights, Lot 1, Section 01, T20N, R11E, Town of Springwater, Twin Lake, Address N 7170, Akron Avenue. Would the applicant or spokesperson please come up?
Good evening.
State your name, Deborah, for the record.
I am Deborah Fliss. In early 2020, we applied for a variance for improvements that had been made to our house on Twin Lake without a permit. As we have expressed before, and I'm expressing again, we sincerely apologize and deeply regret that we did not get the permit before making those additions. As you know, the variance was denied at that time. Following the denial, we've worked with Corporation Council, Ms. Zuzinski and zoning administrator, Mr. Waller, to identify renovations to the house that could reasonably be made to reach an acceptable level of compliance with the county shoreline setback standards. Through all this process, we were in full communication and transparent with the county. We did work with an attorney who is more familiar with the shoreline rules because we honestly don't have any background on that. There were certain actions that the county wanted us to complete. We confirmed that the footprint of our house is outside the flood plain. We also paid for what is known as hydraulic and hydraulic H&amp;H study to confirm that our house does not adversely impact the flood capacity of the lake. After some different alternatives that we considered and discussed with county zoning, we reached an agreement in concept, which is before you tonight. We will be removing all the porch and the roof over the porch that extends from the house towards the lake. We will also be sealing off and permanently ending the use of the front door to the house that faced the lake and provided access onto the house from the porch. Once we have this variance matter settled, hopefully, we will address a new door to the house on the west side, wellware away from any setback concerns, and we will take out all necessary permits and work with Mr. Waller's office at that time. I'm here tonight because we need a variance to retain the extension of our house that is already in place, which extends four feet into the fifty-foot setback. In light of the good faith effort that we have made to address the concerns the county has with our existing structure, and again, based on trying to find a mutually acceptable solution, Mr. Waller and us have agreed in concept that retaining this four-foot extension of the house would be reasonably acceptable. So we are presenting it for your consideration tonight. We will be doing substantial construction to renovate the house in order to bring it closer to compliance with the shoreline standards. However, removing that additional four feet would require ripping off the front wall of the house and rebuilding it. This would only achieve a four-foot, a four-foot reduction encroachment into the shoreline setback. Prior to these changes that were made to the house, there was a deck that my parents put there that extended twelve feet into the setback. So after, after the existing porch is totally removed, and even if we would retain the four-foot extension, there would still be a reduction of eight feet into the encroachment into the setback. I want to thank the board, Mr. Waller, and Ms. Zuzinski for your consideration and cooperation with us as we have tried to resolve this matter. It has been a very trying time for us, this last year and a half, with all the challenges that everyone has faced. Again, we just want to say that we regret that we failed to obtain the necessary permits the first time around. That will never happen again. And we hope we can all put this in the back burner. Thank you.
Okay, I have some list of questions I have, like we did last time.
Okay.
Have, we had a recent survey out there?
Yes, last year.
So we know where the lot lines are?
Yes.
Have you talked to the neighbors in town about this?
The neighbors on the sides, and they, I know originally, they had said they were for it last time we came around. I guess there was an email sent. The ones that are right adjoining to us have no problem at all.
Okay. What type of foundation would this porch be on or deck?
I don't know. I think that would have to first be decided after... I mean, you mean the new one? I don't know. We haven't gotten that far because we don't know how it would be built. That would have to all come to the office with permits and, you know, requests. Yeah. I think we first have to see because that's at the west side.
How high, what's the existing grade going to be above? Is it going to be like lower or higher than the one that's there now?
Well, the level of the house, I think that's that high elevation. So I think that it would have to be probably a little bit higher to have that, to get in that side because the house is higher on that side.
What are we, what are you going to do about erosion and stormwater runoff?
We're going to do plantings. We had talked about that in the past, and then we will do whatever else is necessary when we, you know, when we come forward with the permits to find out what has to be done. We will make sure that it is done.
What about any other improvements planned?
At this time, no, we don't have any improvements planned.
Will setbacks be met?
Yes, definitely.
What about the septic system?
The septic system is capped. They told us at the current time they could not do anything further because of the groundwater is too high. So we were first going to look probably into it again next year because we did discuss it with someone. We did have a hard time getting someone even last year to come out and cap it. But yes, it is capped, it is pumped, and we do plan. They had given us a bid, but they had said right now that doing it couldn't be done. I think the groundwater, because of putting the new tank in, or I don't know all the details on that, I'm sorry.
So the septic there now is temporary? And then you have to relocate the septic, a new septic system back up on the hill behind it, right?
Right, up the hill behind that shed.
They can't do that now because the water's too high.
Right, the water, yes.
What about removing any non-conforming structures?
We are taking down the whole front porch and this roof and everything. That all will be removed.
What other options have you considered?
I don't, I don't know what other options. I mean, removing it is, otherwise that would stay, but I, you know, we have to, we will remove it so that it won't be in the setback. And then the other option is to create this new doorway on the west side of the home.
What are the hardships and unique property limitations which would support this request?
It's a small lot right now. As you have visited, we have high water, not only the lake, of course, but we have that pond that, you know, that overflowed that onto our land, and so the whole back area is flooded. We also had a piece come forward on the west side, which we actually have to have the DNR determine it's not a wetland. So that is in the works, too. So the hardship is, there's really no place else to go. There's nothing else. The lot is kind of, we're surrounded by water right now on both sides, the back and the front.
What kind of permits would you need for this project?
Well, definitely a demolition to remove the porch, and then a building permit and anything else that's necessary. We would request all that information and get any permits that are needed.
When would you start this project, if approved?
I would think we would start it in spring, only because of the weather, too, and we probably would have to get some construction firms to come and help us.
Those are all the lists of questions I have. We'll go to the committee now. John?
All the construction...
Speaking of microphone, John.
All the construction that you've done since you owned it, you got no permits for. You know if your parents got a deck permit when they put the deck addition on?
Surely, I was young. I don't know. I'm so sorry.
Anywhere along the line.
I know, I know we had a shed permit. I know way back there were permits, but I don't know which ones for what. I'm sorry.
Thank you.
I just have, when this was here before the committee for the original, there was an after-the-fact, no permits. To construct a four-foot-by-twenty-eight-foot, one-story addition with an eight-foot-by-twenty-two-covered porch, an eight-foot-by-fourteen-foot open deck, re-pitch the roof on an existing thirty-eight-by-thirty-two, non-conforming, single-family dwelling, non-conforming due to ordinary high-water setback coming to within thirty-eight feet of the high-water mark of Twin Lake, and a ten-foot-by-seventeen-one-story addition, cumulative improvements exceed fifty percent of the present equalized assessed value of the non-conforming dwelling requiring compliance with flood protection in the AG zone. None of those things have been addressed yet, have they?
The flood zone and actively...
The original, the original complaint from June, or not a complaint, but the original variance from June 18th of 2020, now one of those has been taken care of because of these negotiations, correct?
If I could, I'm just going to... The flood plain has since been eliminated. The applicants have worked with FEMA, actually did receive a LOMA, which is a letter of map amendment, pulling the house out of the flood plain. So that did remove the need for a variance to flood-proof the house and the cumulative, cumulative improvements.
Okay.
That's, that, that has been eliminated.
All right. Any other questions, Larry, George, John?
Thank you.
Okay. Come up to the mic and just state. Edward Witty, supporting the Conop and Fliss family. I think if I, if I don't misunderstand you, though, Mr. Waller, the, the addressing the flood zone issue resolved a lot of those other concerns related to aspects of what needed to be addressed.
It removed, it removed the need for a variance, anything having to do with the flood plain, flood-proofing.
Right.
And that, and that, but, and I think where the board was going is that with regard to the variances, in terms of the encroachments to the ordinary high, those still exist.
I just wanted to make sure we understood that it wasn't just ignoring those other situations. Addressing the flood zone issue helped to address those.
Right.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. The committee has no further... Questions?
Would you like to read that?
I received a letter from a neighbor addressed to Kevin Fitzgerald, Chairman, Washere County Board of Adjustments. Dear Mr. Fitzgerald and board members, I am writing regarding the Twin Lake Heights, Lot 1, Section 01, T20N, R11E, Town of Springwater, Twin, Twin Lake, and 717 Akron Avenue, variance request on your 21st October 2021 meeting agenda. Within the last year, we built a small cabin in Washere County. Compliance with various code and ordinance standards were required before construction. We worked closely with the county zoning department and received sign-off before building. This variance request is troubling. Apparently, the ex post facto variance request is on the heels of the Wisconsin Department of Natural Resources investigating the pumping of standing water from the property in the Twin Lake. During this investigation, the DNR also discovered the variance violation. Two wrongs don't make a right. I urge the board to deny this variance request and require compliance with all state and county construction zoning laws. Thank you for your consideration. Sincerely, Joseph H. Quick and Diane Lemke, West 5177 North Twin Lake Road, Wapaka, Wisconsin 54981. Can I introduce that to the... For the record? Any other correspondence?
We have no other correspondence, and nobody registered to speak in favor, against, or informational. Mr. Witty is registered, but obviously acting on behalf of the applicant.
Anyone in favor to speak?
Nope.
Besides the letter I read, anybody objecting?
No.
Okay, staff comments?
Okay, for the benefit of those in attendance in the board, I'd just like to summarize staff's report. Applicants Jerome and Deborah Fliss and John and Bonnie Conop are requesting a variance after the fact to construct a four-foot-by-twenty-eight-foot, one-story addition onto a twenty-eight-foot-by-thirty-two-foot, non-conforming, single-family dwelling, non-conforming due to the ordinary high-water mark setback coming to within forty-six feet of the ordinary high-water mark of Twin Lake when the average is sixty-foot required. As Kevin stated, this is a modification from the original request that came before the Board of Adjustments in June of 2020. At that time, there were a number of variances that were being sought. The four-by-twenty-eight, one-story addition, the eight-by-twenty-two-covered porch, the eight-by-fourteen open deck, the re-pitch of the roof. But as indicated, a few of those have been eliminated due to the involvement and work with FEMA and the obtaining the LOMA from FEMA. Based upon the testimony from that public hearing, the original public hearing, the request was unanimously denied. In forming their decision, the board cited the illegal construction, the fact that there were no permits, and the fear of establishing, establishing a precedent for other violators wishing to seek a variance after the fact. As stated, we have been working with the applicants, as well as... As stated, uh, we have been working with, uh, the applicants as well as their attorney, um, also Ms. Rusowski and that corporate counsel in an attempt to seek a compromise that the county would find acceptable. Um, since that original public hearing back in 2020, we've literally gone round and round with a number of conceptual drawings, um, all of which were found to be unacceptable up, up until the, uh, proposal that you have before you. As proposed, in that they're now seeking to remove the entire front porch, the front porch, uh, covered deck as, and any appurtenances besides the four by 28 addition. Now, the board visited the property at their recent onsite on Monday, October 18th, 2021, and were confused as to why this request was back before them. Concern was raised over the fact that the applicant's original requests were unanimously denied, including the four by 28 one story addition. The question was raised as to why this isn't going before the circuit court. The board directed staff to obtain a written explanation from corporate counsel as to why the board is revisiting this request, um, as it was unanimously denied. I do have a letter which I did forward to each and every one of you. I'll read for the record, uh, from Missowski, dated October 18th. Dear board members, on June 18th, 2020, the Board of Adjustment heard a variance request from the property owners, which was denied. Subsequent to the denial, the property owners hired an attorney. Prior to the deadline to file the certiorari review with the court, the attorney contacted my office to see if there was a way that this matter could be resolved short of formal court action. If a court action is initiated, the court can reverse, affirm, or modify the decision of the Board of Adjustment. Typically, the court issues a decision and then it is set, it, it is up to the zoning and corporate council's offices to, uh, enforce the decision. Often that decision results in enforcement issues that lead to further litigation and costs and does nothing to further the goal of protecting water quality. Therefore, if there is a way to avoid litigation that can address the concerns of the Board of Adjustment, the landowners and the county in general, it is better option and one that has been utilized in the past. The landowner's attorney met with Todd and I to talk about possible solutions. We agreed to toll the time limits for filing the certiorari review to see if it could come up with us, to see if we could come up with a solution that would substantially modify the original request and better meet the intent of the code. After many months and many conversations back and forth, a modification to the original request was, has, was arrived, was arrived at, excuse me, and is being presented to the Board of Adjustment for consideration. It is within the purview of the Board of Adjustments to reconsider its decision. The reconsideration does not need to be an order of the court. In fact, the Board of Adjustment bylaws specifically address the Board of Adjustment's ability to reconsider a decision. The Board of Adjustment does not have to agree with the proposed modification and can affirm its previous denial of the variance request. And then the landowners would need to pursue any further relief with the court. As legal counsel for the county, it is my goal to find solutions and avoid unnecessary litigation and costs. This was an attempt to do so. Excuse me, very truly yours, Rusowski. Staff has reviewed the most recent development proposal and believes the applicants have come a long way in terms of understanding the importance of obtaining permits and complying with county shoreline codes. Excuse me, this latest concept goes a long way in terms of removing some of the non-compliant structures. Should the board concur with the applicant's request, they should include a provision that the applicants work with county LCD staff, excuse me, to obtain an approved mitigation revenge plan for the lakeshore so as to minimize runoff and potential erosion. While the board will be making a formal recommendation on this request later in the evening, staff is recommending approval of the variance after the fact to construct the four by 28 one story addition onto the 28 by 32 non-conforming, single family dwelling, coming to within 46 feet of the ordinary, ordinary high watermark of Twin Lake, subject to the conditions listed in your staff report.
Thank you, Todd. Any questions for Todd? Hearing none. That concludes the, um, I'm sorry, the rebuttal by the attorney. Or, or Ruth, okay. Or Deborah, thank you. That concludes, uh, the, uh, our two variance hearings and, uh, we'll go right to our business meeting. Ready?
I will call this meeting and the Washtera County Planning and Zoning Committee to order. This meeting will be conducted in the same manner as the applications served by the Board of Adjustments. Please remember to keep your comments brief and relative to the matter at hand. The same time limits will apply to testimony, which is five minutes for the applicant outside of committee questions and three minutes for other testimony, including any rebuttal by the applicant. Anyone other than the applicant or their representative wishing to speak at this hearing must have registered. Anyone who has not should do so immediately and submit the registration slip to Todd, the zoning administrator. The committee has looked at all the properties and the record will reflect these observations. Following the public hearing, the committee will conduct their monthly business meeting at which time we will vote on the applications. You may stay and hear how the applications are decided, or you may leave following the public hearing. Any person affected by an administrative decision of this committee has 10 days from the filing of tonight's decision to make an appeal. Such appeals are heard by the Board of Adjustment. Information and applications are available from the zoning office. The county assumes no liability and makes no warranty as to legality of any construction commenced prior to the expiration of this 10 day period. I will now introduce the committee. To my right, to my left, my other right, Jerry Lower, Mike Cap, Pat King, John, Robert Whittle, chairman, Todd Waller, Avery Lear, and, uh, Cindy Rettler. The first, uh, variance tonight. Wrong page.
There you go.
It's getting late, past my bedtime. First one, Jeffrey Papa, Oconomowoc, Wisconsin, has made application for conditional use in accordance with section 58 dash 541 and 58 dash 903, paragraph three of the Washtera County zoning code to conditionally fill more than 10,000 square feet within 300 feet of the shoreline area for the purpose of meeting the flood protection elevation for future building site, not including mapped wetland per DNR delineation or the 35 foot buffer from the original high watermark in the RS 20 residential, single family zone within the shoreline area. Location, an approximate 6.23 acre parcel of land known as part of the north half, government lot one, section two, town 19 north, range 13 east, town of Poisippee, Lake Poigan, address W 661 County Road H. Is the applicant present? Or representative, would you come forward and state what's going on out there?
My name is Corey Kilkoven. I am employed by McMahon Associates. We are representing, uh, Jeffrey and Kathy Papa, who are also in attendance. They are the owners of the property. As stated, the, uh, reason for the application for the conditional use is to fill within the shoreline area. Um, they anticipate filling more than 10,000 square feet for their future building site. We did have the wetlands delineated by our assured wetland delineator. That area will be avoided. And then our maximum filling limits will be, um, greater than 35 feet off the ordinary high watermark.
Okay.
Any questions? Um, I know we did have these areas staked for the field visit that was done yesterday. The intent of that was to kind of give a visualization of what was proposed and, um, help the committee visualize what would be there in the future.
Similar to the other part of a
Exactly. This was originally approved, um, in 2016 for the same conditional use.
We have a few questions similar to the Board of Adjustments. Uh, are you sure where the lot lines are?
Yes, we are. There, um, was a survey done by Carol Land Surveying. Um, I'm not exactly sure of the date, but we did retrace that survey when we did our fieldwork and everything seemed
So you do know where the property lines are?
Correct.
Won't be building on the neighbors or
Correct.
Too close to anything?
Right, and we'll be honoring the setbacks.
All right. Uh, have you talked to the township about this proposal?
Um, we have not.
That's usually a good thing.
Yep.
So we're not left in the dark.
Okay.
I'm not on that township, but I am a chairman for our town and
Yep.
It's always nice to confront or not confront, but to talk to the town.
Yep.
To see if that complies with their comprehensive use plan and other things. Have you talked to the neighbors, the adjoining property owners?
Um, I have not personally. The owners may have.
And? Did you get any, well, we'll get to that if there's correspondence. Anything else from the committee? We were out there and looked at it, obviously, so.
Is it, is there a sewer out there or, or how do you plan on handling the sanitation issue? Holding tanks? It is really low rate.
Yes.
Real.
So did you contact the sanitary district though to see if possible? Okay. Yep.
Any other questions from the committee?
And just for the record to it, it is an existing lot of record. Um, so they would be permitted, it would be permitted to have holding tanks. So that'll be determined at the time that they go and, you know, come in for, for permit.
Correspondence?
Um, we actually do have a letter from the town of Poisippee, um, dated October 13th. Dear Mr. Waller, on October 11th, 2021, the town of Poisippee had their town board meeting and they did vote to approve the Jeffrey Papa, uh, Oconomowoc, Wisconsin, section two, W 661 County Road H, conditional use to conditionally fill more than 10,000 square feet within 300 foot of the shoreline area for the purpose of meeting the flood protection elevation for a future building site. Uh, sincerely, Sue Albright.
Anyone in favor?
I have nobody registered to speak in favor against or informational.
Staff comments?
Okay, I'm just going to summarize staff's report here quickly. Um, the applicant Jeffrey Papa, owner of the property, is requesting a conditional use to fill more than 10,000 square feet within 300 foot of the shoreline area for the purpose of meeting the flood protection elevation for a future building site. It does not include mapped wetlands per the DNR delineation or the 35 foot buffer area from the ordinary high watermark, all within the RS 20 residential, single family zone within the shoreline area of the town of, of Poisippee. This request did come before the planning and zoning committee back in 2016, actually the exact request. At that time, the development request was extensively reviewed by both the DNR, uh, and the county from a wetland and floodplain perspective. Uh, for, and for whatever reason, the project just never got off the ground. Conditional uses expired, any permits that were pulled and that everything had since expired. Planning and zoning committee did visit the property at the recent onsite on Wednesday, October 20th, and were in general support of the request and offered really no other comments. Staffs reviewed this request and feels that pending formal review and approval by the DNR as well as the county floodplain code compliance, the conditional request should pose no detrimental impact upon the area. While the committee will be making a formal recommendation on this request later in the evening, staff is recommending approval of the conditional use to fill more than 10,000 square feet within 300 foot of the shoreline area, subject to the, uh, conditions that you have listed before you in your report.
Do you have anything else to add or comment on? Next, uh, conditional use, Washtera County, Watoma, Wisconsin, has made an application for a conditional use in accordance with section 58 dash 454, paragraph 22 of the Washtera County zoning code to conditionally establish a public, semi-public building for the use of the Washtera County EMS and senior dining center in the AG general egg zone. Location, a portion of lot two of certified survey map 6545, being part of the northwest quarter of the southwest quarter, section seven, town 19 north, range 13 east, town of Poisippee, State Road 49. Is Ruth is here, ready to go?
I am.
Uh, five minutes is all we're going to give you.
I don't have time for my song and dance that you missed at county board last night or Tuesday. Uh, Ruth Zowsky, Corporation Counsel, uh, on behalf of Washtera County. Um, we have a, um, offer to purchase, um, part of this parcel, um, with the current property owners. They have accepted, um, our offer, but, uh, it has not closed yet. We are, is contingent upon this approval. An easement, uh, with, uh, the landowners, uh, that own the property that the Dollar General is sitting on to use their access off of 49 as an entrance for our senior dining portion, um, part of this building. And we have an application in with the DOT for an emergency access for the EMS, um, parcel. So I don't know the exact lot lines because we're buying part of a parcel. Um, the survey will be done at the time of closing if we get all of our approvals. DOT has all of the information, um, on that driveway application. I have not personally heard back from DOT, but I think zoning might have. I have talked to the landowners, um, and also have had some communication with their franchisee manager for Dollar General regarding a possible easement, um, for that shared access. It, it seems like that is not going to be an issue. We need to jump through, the landowner needs to jump through a hoop with Dollar General because they want an addition on their lease indicating that they won't give an easement to somebody who is putting up some type of building that would be detrimental to their business. Um, and then, um, we will also be working on doing an easement for that. But the landowner has agreed in concept, Dollar General has agreed in concept to modifying their lease, so I don't see that that's going to be, um, a detriment. If we got approval of this, we would hope to have, um, the building, um, we'd have the area surveyed yet this year and possibly have it out to bid for, um, footings. Currently, our EMS, um, station in, on the east side, we are renting a living quarters, um, that is on a second story with outside access steps that has caused us, um, some workers comp issues. Um, it is across the street and down some more steps away from, um, our ambulance, so it impacts our response time. Uh, this will put this all in one place. In addition, the senior dining center in the Poisippee area currently is in the basement of the parsonage, um, to the church, um, because the current minister had not been using the parsonage. Um, I don't know how long that will last, but if you've ever been in there, it's a very small kind of narrow area and it doesn't leave a lot of room, um, especially like in times like COVID, we couldn't space anybody. And even though there are two exits, one exit really isn't accessible for the clientele at the senior dining center. So this would make it a safer situation, um, for the senior dining center as well.
Questions by the committee?
Um, just want to note there's city sewer there, right?
Yes. Yes, so we would be connecting to that. Well, yes, to, and then we, but we would need a well for water.
Has there been any other consideration of, uh, not using the common driveway and putting in our own driveway or is that up to DOT or?
Yeah, because it is coming off of State Highway 49, we do not meet the spacing requirements for an additional driveway. So the request is to have, um, a driveway, uh, for EMS, which would be emergency vehicle access only, and that would be a variance to their driveway spacing standards. Um, and so then that shared access, you would go in the access and you would turn one way to go to Dollar General and one way to go to the senior dining. Um, and I think that that would probably best fit with DOT's intentions due to, we can't meet the driveway spacing as it is even for the emergency access.
Yes, I just don't want to see a can of worms opened up and then 10 years down the road, something happens and we're in a that'd be my only concern.
Well, I'm hoping that the fully recorded acts, the easement wouldn't be a problem, even if Dollar General went away, um, but it would be, um, following the land. That land, that area that is the access right now where they come off of 49 was labeled as future road right of way. So if there's additional development out in that area, it's possible it could in the future become a town road. Um, the landowner wasn't necessarily opposed to that either. Um, so even if Dollar General goes away, at least this landowner seems like he is very open and we would make sure that any easement said that it went with the land. and we would make sure that any easement said that it went with the land and to all assigns.
Okay.
Thank you.
Uh, correspondence?
Okay, um, we do have a letter from the town of Poisippee, it was a continuation from the, uh, letter for the Papas. Uh, but it dated October thirteenth, dear Mr. Waller, also on October eleventh, tw- uh, twenty twenty-one, the town board approved Washeera County's conditional use to conditionally establish a public, semi-public building for the use of the Washeera County EMS and senior dining center in the A G zone in section seven on state road, uh, excuse me, state road forty-nine. Uh, sincerely, Sue Albright, clerk for town of Poisippee.
Hey, anyone in favor to speak?
I do have a registrant registered to speak in favor and also informational, Jim Sattler. Would you like to please come up?
Jim Sattler, I am the landowner that they're gonna be purchasing the land from. Um, I think that this would be an asset to the community to have this. Um, only thing I'm asking, which I had talked to Ruth already about, was myself having access on the, or easement to be able to use the driveway that the EMS is coming out of to get to my, my land to firement and, um, to get to my pasture. That would be the only thing, um, and as far as the road being developed in the future, that's what they, when they built Dollar, Dollar General, that's what we put that in there for, was for that purpose.
When, when we did the Dollar General too, and I remember with Kelly Nicholas, there was, there's kind of a drainage ditch that goes through that area and that cuts your parcel in half.
Yeah.
They granted access, did they not, to the south, to that south portion?
I believe so.
Yes, that's what I thought.
So otherwise, as far as the community, I think they're in favor of it. And I think it would be an asset to the community, so that's all I have. Thank you.
Anyone objecting?
That's all we have in terms of registrants.
Oh. My name is Pat Merkley, I own those tire and automotive in Poisippee, right across the road from there. Um, I've been there thirty year, or twenty-nine years and I'll be honest, I'm thinking, hanging her up finally. Um, I have a very nice building there and it's plenty big, it's just been all remodeled, the front part of it. It is all handicap accessible, it has everything there for everything. Uh, it has the back is part where they could have the ambulances, it has rooms in back also. There's two offices, there is place for a shower back there and everything. It's just an option to put out there. Um, I'm just came to let it go or let it know that I'm getting to the end of my career there and obviously I like to possibly sooner or later get rid of it. And this seems like a pretty good fit for what they want. Um, like I said, everything's been updated, it's a beautiful building, it has two accesses from the road. Um, it is what it is, I guess a person might have come out and look at it and see, I just thought it'd be worth mentioning, you know, so. That's all I got, so I'm not against anything or for anything, I just thought I was gonna put that out there, so.
Yes, I'm not on the building committee, so. Pat, are you on that committee?
I am.
Was there any consideration given to some other, I mean, I don't know and I don't know where you're at if it's.
Obviously, it's a beautiful facility.
I don't know if there, um, our, the person handling that for us is, um.
Bert?
And, um, he's working with, um, Samuel's Group, so, um, that would be the person to contact. I think with any of those other locations, I think they're concerned about having, they wanna make a multiple use of the emergency ambulance is, and, and the dining center, so.
Exactly, and this is, this is all, I mean, you can split it up easily, there's glass doors in between. Um, it is, it's set up where you could have two different things in there. Um, like I said, it's just been all remodeled in the last two years, everything's been remodeled up front. Um, like I said, you'd have to come and look at it and see, I know it's big enough. Um, the back part of the building is, uh, it's a hundred and twenty by sixty-six wide. Uh, that has two, uh, huge overhead doors, they're all power, it's got, it's got everything there, it's got security, it's got cameras. I mean, the building is up to snuff, it really is. Um, the front part is thirty-three by forty, which is, that's been all remodeled. And like I said, it's got handicap accessible bathroom, I mean, it has everything there. It's just, uh, you got all your internet there, everything is there, it's got the well, it has the septic or the sewer, I should say. I mean, it's kind of a quick deal if they decided to do it, you know, you could move in there tomorrow if you're, you know, when I'm getting that.
Just one question, I'm not trying to be sarcastic or that. Were you aware of them looking for something or is this just?
No, I just, just following out about it with the letter they mailed to me. You know, so I thought, well, it's an option, you know.
Cause we were speaking on the county board level, we were informed of a building would be to the west of the gas station or something, but that was not adequate.
Nope.
Size, I know where yours is.
Okay.
That was not adequate for size for what they needed with the building and, and that, so.
Yeah, like I say, this is a big facility and it's all blacked out, I mean, it's, and we've kept it up, you know. Said I've been there twenty-nine years and kept everything up the best they possibly could, so. But just food for thought, I guess, and to think about, if anybody wants to look, I'm there every day, you know.
We'll consider that when we make our decision.
Right.
And one thing too that we could do is we could consider the conditional use, i- it could still go forward in terms of the conditional use and then knowing that there's possibly another property out there, something else that maybe the building, you know, buildings and grounds committee.
I mean, I don't know how far, how far into this they are, I mean, I know they wanna get going, it's been a, a to-do thing for years, Poisipia's been.
Yep. And. It's, it, you know, or it, we could go forward with the conditional uses, that, you know, if, if the board so chooses or the committee so chooses to go forward with the approval, that doesn't affect anything, I, you know what I mean? They can still negotiate other properties.
Right.
It's just that, you know, that's, and this conditional use typically, we have one year from the date of, of approval to go forward.
All right, staff comments?
Okay, um, real quickly, just the applicant Washeera County is requesting a conditional use to establish a public semi-public building for the use of, of the Washeera County EMS and senior dining center, A G general agricultural zone in the town of Poisippee. Um, when the county recently approved the renovation and building project, it included not only a new courthouse to be constructed immediately east of the sheriff's office, it was to include new facilities for our public works and highway department, which is currently located behind Stone Ridge as well as a new future EMS senior dining facility, uh, to hopefully be constructed in the Poisippee area. Staff's been working very closely with the architect, uh, trying to identify properties along state highway forty-nine. Um, there were several things that we looked at, um, when we worked with them is, number one is constructability and soils to ensure that, you know, we're gonna minimize construction costs. And then the one thing that obviously was a big concern too was sanitary services. Uh, some of the properties that we were looking at were looking at either holding tanks or at-grade, um, or mound systems, um, which tend to be very costly. Um, this was a site that just met all the criteria in terms of being able to hook up to sanitary system, um, thereby negating any, uh, individual pouch system. What you have before you right now are two concepts, um, essentially the same, but located to the south and to the east of the Dollar General location. Um, we have been working very closely with the Department of Transportation, given the driveway separation standards, um, along route forty-nine. Um, when the Dollar General was approved, we worked very closely with them during the, because they also needed a variance, given the length of the property, they also needed a variance in terms of getting an access. And our concern too was what do we do to the back, what do we do to the rear of the property in gaining access? Um, and it was always done and it's even on the C S M, is that that is future right of way? Their, their access is actually designed with sixty-six feet of right of way for future access to the south or, or excuse me, to the, uh, to the east there. Um, or possibly accommodate, you know, another use such as this, where you have a shared driveway in essence. Um, I have talked with Kelly Nicholas, she's the permitting, um, agent, the permitting authority. Um, they have given preliminary approval of the secondary driveway. Um, I know that they did a field review and felt that, given the fact that the, uh, speeds decreased down to thirty-five miles per hour there, um, and the fact that it's going to be signed and used only for emergency ingress and egress, um, they didn't foresee any potential problems. Um, staff has reviewed this request, oh, one other item too, I know that planning and zoning committee, we kinda did a fly-by, um, review of the property, but we were generally in, uh, support of the, of the request, really with no other comments. Staffs reviewed this request and believes that either conceptual layout will not only meet the county servicing needs, but maintain adequate soils for low-cost building, uh, construction costs and will also have direct access to the Poisippee sanitary district. While the committee will be making a recommendation on this request later in the evening, staff is recommending approval of the conditional use to establish a public semi-public building for the use for the Washeera County EMS and senior dining center, uh, subject to the conditions listed in your report they have before you. Uh, with regard to property, and I know regarding plat of survey, either parcel, we can very easily establish a certified survey map, uh, when, when that time comes.
Anything to add or subtract, Ruth, this time? Okay, thank you. Next conditional use application, Jeffrey and Mary Rodenzel, Pine River, have made application for a conditional use in accordance with section fifty-eight dash four, five, four, paragraph thirty-one of the Washeera County zoning code to conditionally place a twenty nineteen skyline Arlington E four oh three, sixteen foot by seventy-six foot, three-bedroom, two-bath, used mobile home on a slab in the A G general egg zone. Location, an approximate two point seven four acre parcel of land known as part of the west half of the northeast quarter, section twenty-four, town nineteen north, range twelve east, town of Leon, address N three, five, six, zero, thirtieth drive. Is the applicant present?
Yes, sir, I am, Mary Rodenzel. My husband Jeffrey and I would like to put this home on our property, we own that parcel that is adjacent to thirtieth drive and then we also own the parcel directly to the east of it, sorry, I had to stop thinking about directions. Um, and the, there's a field to the north of it. And basically, we'd like to put this on our property because of our children are grown, but yet I would still like to have them come home and my sister lives in Ohio and she wants to come visit for a couple of months of the year and we would like to have a place that people could come to or my kids could come to, cause their families are growing. And, um, it just seemed like the perfect spot to put it, because we already have a well and electric with the shed that we had on the property that used to be, we used to grow fish in that shed. And then, um, basically, we'd be able to hook into the well and the current electric there and then, uh, run it right to the home and then put it on a slab in the corner.
Hey, we probably have a few questions if you've been listening.
Yeah, that's fine.
But.
I'll do my best.
You, have you had a recent survey done?
The survey was actually done, the original survey to the north, obviously between Jeff, our, the, our two parcels was done about twenty-eight years ago. Then there was a survey that was done of the land between us and Chris and Stacy Holmes, um, but it was originally, um, excuse me, uh, Suzie Rickert, um, had purchased it from, um, Sylvia and Eugene Rodenzel. And it was surveyed at that point in time, um, be- when they had Eugene and Sylvia had sold the parcel to them. Um, we have the property, the corner markers are there. Um, and they're, the stakes are still in the ground, we did not have it re-surveyed.
So you do know where the property lines are?
Exactly where they are.
Have you talked to the neighbors about this?
Um, we did not talk to, uh, I did not talk to Chris and Stacy, um, yet. They said that they would mail them a letter and I was under the impression I was supposed to wait for the letter, sorry. Um, but it's a, it, with it being a field and the Chris and Stacy are in the back, um, I didn't see it being a problem, we haven't had problems.
You brought this before the town board?
Uh, I did call, I did not go before the board, the entire board, I, I spoke with, um, uh, the chairperson, uh, Mr. Sorensen. And then, um, he got back to me and he had told me by phone that there wasn't an issue that he knew of.
And it seems like you got plenty of room there for parking, yeah?
Yes, sir.
Okay, any questions by the committee?
Same question as the other people, um.
Okay.
You have, uh, you mentioned water and.
Yes, sir.
How about sewer, are you having a, uh, septic system put in and?
A private one, we have a permit. Um, yeah.
Looks like you had plenty of land, but I just wanted to.
Yeah, no, uh, Mr. Jorgensen said that, um, he came in, got the permit and, uh, said that he would put in a gravity flow there.
Any other questions? All right, you can have a seat for now.
Thank you.
Uh, correspondence?
Okay, we haven't received any correspondence, um, but just for the record, we have sent out notification, um, of the public hearing to everyone within two hundred and fifty feet as well as the town and we haven't heard, you know, yes or no, I mean, nobody has commented.
Okay, so, anyone in favor or objecting to speak?
No, I have nobody registered.
All right, staff comments?
Okay, um, the applicants Jeffrey and Mary Roden Sol, uh, Roden, I'm sorry, how do I, Rodenzel, sorry about that. Are requesting a conditional use.
He's not from the area.
I, yeah, to place a used twenty but nineteen skyline Arlington E four, zero, three, sixteen by, uh, seventy-six, three-bedroom, two-bath, mobile home, single-family dwelling on a slab in an A G general agricultural zone in the town of Leon. Um, county maintains very little information, um, on the original property, however, there were a couple of land use permits for a couple of the structures, those which we've seen out there, what was the thirty by forty metal pole shed and the thirty-five by sixty, uh, hoop tent. Um, of concern to the county for any structure like this, any used structure, is that they're properly inspected for the safety of the occupants and maintained or finished to a like-new condition. As we witnessed, um, on our onsite, the twenty by nine, or excuse me, twenty nineteen, uh, mobile home slash single-family residence um, is maintained like new. Um, so I really don't think there's any concerns, um, on that behalf. Um, staff has reviewed this request, believes the placement of a used dwelling at this location with the improvements planned on the property should no way detract from area property values. While the committee will be ma- making a recommendation on this request later in the evening, staff is recommending approval of the conditional use to request, uh, conditional use request to place a used twenty nineteen skyline, um, town home and that as subject to the conditions listed in your report.
Do you have anything to say in rebuttal, ma'am? All right. Uh, the next item up for discussion, a zone change. Beach House Rentals LLC, Wapaka, Wisconsin, has made an application for a zone change in accordance with section fifty-eight dash five, four, one, and fifty-eight dash six, six, one, of the Washeera County zoning code to from C G general commercial to RS twenty residential, single-family to convert an existing seventy-foot by thirty-two-foot restaurant to a single-family dwelling and to construct a new single-family on the vacant lot. Location, two parcels of land known as lots, one and two, on a certified survey map, six, five, two, five, section twenty-six, town twenty north, range eleven east, town of Springwater, Pusso Lake, address W five, five, six, five, Springwater Drive. Is there a representative or people from them here?
We not have an applicant here, um, be it notified.
And I talked to him on Tuesday and he said. I just checked my email.
Big table, it been till next, next month.
Gentlemen, what do you think, table it till they're not here, maybe? Move the table. That'll come later, right?
Yeah.
So then we don't have to go through the.
Nope.
All right, that concludes our application process. Uh, I will call the regular meeting to order, the applications, we did those, roll call will show that all members.